Good to go. Hi, everyone, and welcome. Thank you so much for coming along today. We've also got some people joining us online, so hello to the people that might be online. My name is Stacey, dietitian, working for a company called Simply Nutrition, and today's presentation is on Healthy Eating for the Mind. So if I go through a little recap of what we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about what eating for the mind means, the different ways that we can think about, I guess, how our food might affect our mind, self-care through food, why self-care through food is important, and how it might detract from a healthy mind, and then we're going to start getting into like the nitty-gritty and the fun stuff, so what we can actually do to eat well for our mind, and yeah, I guess, making sure we're getting all of those right tips and planning our nutrition out right. So the first way that we can think about eating for our mind is more for that day-to-day. So the concentration, and I guess often self-care is overlooked, but when it comes to self-care, what we know is that exercise with rest and appropriate fuel, so appropriate nutrition, we're going to have both that improved mental and physical capacity. So it's super important that we do self-care, and that we self-care through the exercise and the rest, and today we'll talk about that appropriate fuel side of things. So to get into what might detract from self-care, I like to spend a little bit of time on this because I think sometimes we focus on what we can do, what we can implement, but we don't really think about the barriers that might be in the way of implementing those things. So the first one there is whether there might be some other reasons that we're eating. So we might be eating for stress, or for comfort, or to make you feel happy. Very, very common is to use food as like a mood manager. We might choose really, maybe not the greatest foods because we've had a really bad day at work, or we're tired, or we're really stressed out, or something's ticked us off for the day, and we might have something that might not be the greatest for your health to sort of manage that mood. And initially, that's probably not bad in the short term, just for one day, but over time, if that becomes more of our only coping mechanism, that's where it can become a little bit of a trap, where we're always using that food to sort of manage our mood. So there is some little tips and strategies that we can pop into place to help us with that. So if you do catch yourself in that trap where you're sort of might be reaching each day for something to sort of pick you up when you've had a bit of a knock in your day, maybe thinking about different things. We call them distraction techniques, so something that you could put in place that might sort of be a better coping strategy, like that wouldn't really impact negatively on your health. So some people find if they've had a really bad day, it might be, okay, instead of that, whatever it might be, not to be negative towards Big Macs, but instead of that Big Mac, it might be, I might call a friend. Or instead of having that chocolate that you've been sort of eyeing off all afternoon, it might be, I'm going to go outside, I'm going to play with a puppy dog. So it's finding those different coping strategies, finding those different coping strategies that aren't food-related, that might really help with some of those day-to-day mood stresses or, yeah, I guess, negative things that might happen in your day. Number two is restrictive dieting. So I think this one's a really important one to touch on because often when we go to change our food, we do end up on a little bit of a cycle. So this one's called the dieting cycle, and essentially, it's not just to lose weight. So you might start a diet to look after your gut health, you might start a diet because you've heard all of this wonderful stuff about your mind today that you're going to implement, or you might be wanting to lose weight, but what happens is we start at the top of that pinwheel, that food restriction or that dieting part, and often if we're restricting our food, or we are dieting, or we've told ourselves that we're never going to eat that certain food again because you know it's not good for your health, we end up in that second step, so that deprivation. So you might have cut out a whole food group, so you're feeling really low in fats because you've gone on a low-fat diet, or you might be really low in carbohydrates because you've gone on a low-carbohydrate diet, or you might just have that mental deprivation where you've told yourself, I'm never going to eat chocolate again, and then all of a sudden, all you can think about is, I would really like chocolate, I would really like chocolate. So that means we're in that deprivation state. Then eventually, we are going to cave. We're human, we're going to eat to feel better, we're going to have those foods that we maybe haven't been eating, we've maybe gone to a party and we've had to have some of that food, and that sets us off, there might be something like that that happens and we eat to feel better, might eat better, we might feel better for a little while after eating that food, but then we loop around the cycle. We might go, oh, why did I do that? I've really wanted to look after my gut health, I really wanted to lose weight, and now you're disappointed that you've sort of blown it, essentially, that we feel guilty, and then we loop back around, and we can end up in this dieting cycle. So I guess why I wanted to say that is often when we change our food, we need to do it more from that lifestyle perspective, that you're making sort of changes that are sustainable, that might last a long time, that aren't going to always pop you in that state where you're feeling deprived, so that we don't just keep looping around this, changing our food, and then ending back at square one, or often we're not at square one, sometimes we can be a little bit worse off when we loop back around. So that's the dieting cycle. So I want you to keep that in the back of your mind with any diet changes, remember we want them to be sustainable. Number three, I won't talk about for too long, but that's managing your emotions via alcohol. That's one that can be quite tricky, really detracts from self-care. We know that really high alcohol intakes can impair your absorption of nutrients, so you can end up quite nutrient-depleted if you're drinking quite a lot of alcohol, so long-term, not going to be the best for your health, and it won't be the best for your mind, which when we learn what those nutrients do and how they can affect your mental health, we can sort of see that that alcohol is not going to be the best for us long-term. Number four and five, they're on the same sort of vein, so setting yourself up to fail, or that obsession with it all having to be perfect. Sometimes if we think it has to be perfect, it's all too hard and we don't start, or we end up on that dieting cycle and we're depriving ourselves. So making sure that we're not, I guess, aiming for perfect nutrition, we're aiming for good nutrition, and we're having that good balance with it. The setting yourself up to fail, that's going to come into what we're going to talk about next, which is what adds to self-care. So in terms of not setting ourselves up to fail, we want to make sure we've got the right processes in place to make sure that we're organising, planning, preparing, and eating our meals mindfully. So with that meal planning, I could tell you all of these wonderful, wonderful tips today, but unless you have a plan in place of how you're going to sort of do it and how you're going to implement it, there's no point having all that knowledge. So often before making a diet change, we need to make sure we make a change to how we organise our meals, because if we're getting to maybe eight o'clock on a Wednesday night and we realise we haven't organised dinner, we're going to have Vegemite on toast and go to bed, and then we haven't really nourished our body. So we need to make sure we've sort of planned out our meals, is the step one. So what that might look like for you could be different to what it looks like for me, but some people might have a little meal planner that they stick on the fridge, and they'll write out what they're going to have for each dinner across the week, they might have a whiteboard that they scribble it on, they might just do it in the notes of their phone, if they take their phone to the shopping store with them, and then from that is making a grocery list. So making sure you've got the plan and you've found something that works for you is super important when it comes to self-care through food. Meal preparation, so that's then, so you've got the perfect plan, now we actually need to implement it. So are we going to allow time to shop and cook? When are we going to get that done? We're going to shop once a week? If we're shopping sort of every night, which is often what can happen if we're not planning, we're spending so much more time in that labour of shopping that we could be sort of at home preparing a nourishing meal or spending time with your family, or doing something you enjoy. So maybe working it out so you can shop that once a week, if that works for you. You might also pre-prepare ingredients. So some people will prepare whole meals, which is wonderful if that works for you, or even some people find it's helpful just to prep maybe a small portion, so they might roast up the sweet potato for the week that they're going to pop with their salad and meat, or whatever it might be, but you can prep small parts of the meal to make your week go a little bit quicker, or you can prep whole meals if that's going to work for you. Along with the meal planning and preparation, you want to make sure it's practical, so we don't want to set ourselves up for fail and have a plan to cook a gourmet meal every single night of the week, even though Thursday nights we get home late because we've got to be out at that certain, whatever it might be, we might be out at sports with kids, or we might be visiting family or friends, so we don't want to plan something that's not feasible. So if that's the night where you plan a frozen meal for dinner, we can get the good-brand ones, which we can chat about, but that might be what works best for that night, so that we're not having Vegemite on toast or something really quick. Mindful eating, so that's another thing that can add to self-care. So essentially, that's just taking the time, you've just planned, you've just prepared, you've spent all of this time making your meals, and then often we can sit down in front of the TV and eat them in five minutes. So what we know is if we eat quite mindfully, you've got stretch receptors in your stomach, so as your stomach, as you eat food, your stomach stretches with the presence of that food in your stomach, and you've also got lots of hormones that are produced when you're eating the food. Both the hormones and those stretch receptors, they send a signal to the brain to tell you that you're getting full. That signal takes around 20 to 30 minutes to actually get there and tell your brain, hey, I'm full. So if we sit in front of the TV and we eat really, really quickly in five minutes, you kind of finish and go, I'm still hungry, I'll go have some seconds, or, oh, I'm still hungry, I'm going to have, I know I wasn't going to have dessert, but I'm going to have dessert tonight because I'm still hungry, and we go and grab something else to eat. But what happens then is often we have the seconds, or we have the dessert, and then you're like, oh, no, I'm way too full, how did I do this again? I've overeaten. So often, it's just that the time has not elapsed, we've eaten quickly, and we haven't registered that sense of fullness at the end of the meal. And often, we don't then time that satisfaction with the end of the meal, we might time that satisfaction with dessert, so it was the dessert that made me finally feel full and satisfied, rather than it being the meal that made you feel full and satisfied. So mindful eating, super important for the fact that we can eat to manage our portions quite well, but it's also important, we've spent the time labouring over producing the meals, so enjoy it, and you put flavours in it, and we make it tasty for a reason, food is meant to be enjoyed. Social meals, I like to touch on this. Since the beginning of time, I'm sure, we've sat down with other people to eat socially, it's a very important part of human nature, and I have so many people that sort of say to me in clinic that, oh, I know I try to eat really well, but then I've always got to go out for dinner on the weekends and it all comes unstuck. That's going to be normal, it's not those once-a-week things that matter, it's the every day that matters when it comes to your health. So if you do have to go out for a meal on the weekend, and maybe it's not the healthiest food that you'd like to be eating, that once a week doesn't matter, it's the day-to-day that matters. So go out and enjoy your social meal, and remember that it's important, it's important to fill your cup up, and it's important for self-care to have those social meals with your family and your friends or your colleagues. And the last one is finding a balance, so that's along the lines of making sure that we're not aiming for perfection, food's meant to be part of your life, it's not meant to rule your life, so it shouldn't be something that we're thinking about all day, every day, it should just become second nature to eat well, is the goal. So having a little bit of a reflection as to whether we're self-caring through food, maybe there's a few things we could do a little bit better, and I guess popping that into place before we add all of these strategies that I'm about to go through, because if we don't have the plan, it won't work, so making sure we've got that in place. So what on earth should we be eating? How do we look after our day-to-day concentration and focus, or our long-term cognitive health? So we're starting with more of that day-to-day. Number one is very, very simple, is to eat regularly. If we eat irregularly, if we skip meals, we will feel tired. Number two is me, hungry, will get hungry, angry, will have that poor concentration that we spoke about. Number four there, inadequate opportunity to provide essential nutrients. So if we skip breakfast, then we get to lunch, we have a late lunch, but we're so hungry, we just went for anything, and then dinner, we were full because we had this really late lunch, means we've really only had one eating time in the day to get nutrients in. So if we're trying to get the good stuff in and we're skipping all of these meals, it's hard to actually have the time or the eating opportunity to get those in. So eating regularly gives you that chance to get the good stuff in multiple times across the day, and tick all of the macronutrients and the micronutrients boxes, and a lot of the other boxes that we're about to talk about. The last one there is overeating at other times during the day. So if we do, again, skip recce, maybe have a later lunch, but we were busy, so we just had a coffee and a cake, and we get later in the day and we're like, oh my gosh, why am I so hungry? And then we overeat later in the day because we're trying to make up for, or your body is already maybe in that slight deprivation for that day, and you kind of feel like, oh, I'm going to eat, I've got to eat a lot. So you might overeat later in the day if we've skipped those meals across the day. So what it should look like, again, it's not as simple as one size fits all, but a really good guide to aim for is to get your three main meals, so your breakfast, your lunch, and your dinner each day, and then maybe two nourishing snacks in between if needed. There's a hormone in your body called ghrelin, I call it grumble ghrelin, so it's a hormone that signals for your tummy to grumble and for you to feel physically hungry. That hormone comes along roughly every three to four hours, which is when your body's, I guess, naturally causing you to feel that sense of hunger. So we do want to eat in line with that if we can, so if we are eating sort of breakfast, maybe a snack, lunch, and a dinner, that often correlates with every three to four hours, which perfectly aligns with when that hormone's rising and that hormone's sort of falling after you eat. So that grumble ghrelin guides why we suggest that nice regular eating pattern across the day when it comes to the first step, which is eat regularly. Number two is eating adequate protein and having low GI carbohydrates. So what GI is, which is where we'll start, glycemic index is basically a measure of how quickly a carbohydrate is, I guess, digested and absorbed, and it turns into sugar in the blood, essentially. So we've got really quick carbohydrates, they digest really, really quickly, they give you a bit of an energy spike, and they give you an energy crash, so they're more of your easy digestible carbohydrates. We'll talk about which ones they are and which ones the other ones are in a moment. Then the flip side of that is we have something called low GI carbohydrates, so they digest a lot more slowly, and that means they raise your sugar levels in your blood more slowly, which means you've got a longer sustained release of energy. So if we're thinking about keeping our concentration and our productivity and our focus up across the day, those low GI carbohydrates are going to be much better, because we're not getting a big sugar high and crash, we're getting a nice slow release of that energy that comes from that food across the day. So what your low GI carbohydrates are is, so if you can do some swaps, so the whole-grain breads or the whole-grain wraps, maybe choosing a basmati rice over like a jasmine rice is a quick one, whereas a basmati rice is a nice slow one, high-fibre pasta, quinoa, whole-grain wheat flakes, opting for rolled oats over something like quick oats, and fruits, most of your fruits are a low GI carbohydrate, so they give you that nice sustained release of energy. So that's number one, low GI. Number two is adequate protein. So protein, when we talked about that grumble ghrelin, if you include protein in each of your meals, it's one of the best, we call them macronutrients, so it's one of the best, I guess, aspects of your meal that helps to tell that hormone to be quiet for a while. So if you skip the protein in your meal, often that hormone comes along a little bit quicker, so we feel hungrier more quickly, so the protein helps to, I guess, suppress or dampen that hormone for longer, so you feel fuller and more satiated and, I guess, content for longer after a meal. So what is adequate protein? It does depend on the person, but for the average population, that's around 75 to 85 grams a day. So what that might look like, we're going to have a quiz, see how we go, tricky quiz, we'll just go one by one. How much protein do we think might be in two egg? So protein foods, a good guide at your meals is about palm-sized for your meats, or your chickens, or your different sort of main proteins. Fish is a little bit bigger, would be a piece of fish if you'd go for a piece of fish. You've got egg, so it's a couple of eggs is a serve, tofu, legumes, beans, dairy, nuts, they're your main protein foods for the day. And then we've got the low carbohydrate foods there, so when we're having our meal, that's the balance of the nutrients, the main nutrients that we want to get, which should build up around half our plate. You can see in the top right-hand corner, we've got the carbohydrates in that top corner of that little picture, and then we've got the proteins down the bottom, so typically that should take up about half your plate at a mealtime, or half your meal at a mealtime should be coming from those two main nutrients. So what does it look like in practice? How can we implement what we just spoke about? So you could do simple swaps if you haven't already made these ones, so swap from white to multigrain bread, maybe trying to mix up your grains, so instead of jasmine rice, you might have some quinoa, very similar to cook, so you could put those with your next stir-fry. Make sure every lunch you pack does have that source of protein, so if you're in the habit of maybe a Vegemite sandwich, perhaps it might be packing something a little bit more nourishing, whether it be a chicken and salad sandwich, so you've got that nourishment on that protein source on your lunch. Have a piece of fruit for morning tea and afternoon tea with a protein snack. Often, we'll just grab the fruit, so you might have the fruit with maybe some, you can get some really yummy roasted chickpeas, there's these ones down the bottom here, them ones are chocolate-covered, so you even get a little bit of sweet, but you can get some salty, lightly salted ones, which are a good source of protein. You might go for the higher-protein yoghurts that you can get at the shops, there's the YoPros or the Chobani Fits, or you can get the better high-fibre pasta, or the ready-made brown rice sachets, they can be quite good as well, they sort of come ready for you, so if you're in a late night, oh goodness, what shall I have? That would be something better to go for to sort of pair with your meals, or to pop with your salad and a little bit of meat. Eating for the minds, number three, is healthy fats. So this is where we're going to start thinking about the future you. So essentially, we've got the healthy fat is a slow-digesting form of energy again, it helps to facilitate that sustained energy release, but more importantly, omega-3s, which are part of your healthy fat group, they're the main building block of your brain. So higher intakes, or adequate intakes of the omega-3 in particular, have been linked to improved memory and reduced rates of that cognitive decline, which is again, not something we think about day-to-day, but we do want to think about future you and making sure that we're doing what we can to look after that omega, that brain health long-term. So what are the right type of fats? So your mono or polyunsaturated fats, they're, I think it could be a truck reversing, apologies, You do have your mono and your polyunsaturated fats, so they're your healthy fats. The not-so-healthy ones are the saturated fats, so if you've ever flipped over your labels and looked at them, they're often broken down into fat, saturated fat, and then we call them MOFAs and POFAs, monounsaturated fatty acids and polyunsaturated fatty acids is what they stand for. So they're your healthy fats, the MOFAs and the POFAs, but you've also got then broken down the omega-3s, so that's oily fish, so if we're thinking about getting in those good things for your long-term health, we're thinking salmon, tuna, mackerel, sardines. So we do say oily fish about three times a week is suggested, so it's a little bit more than definitely the average population is having that oily fish. Seaweeds and other source, flaxseeds, chia seeds, they're those little black seeds, they're really good sprinkling on yoghurts and things like that, walnuts and soybean products. Omega-6s, not so much of a focus, but important to include nonetheless, so sunflower oil, sunflower seeds, walnuts is another one, they come into both groups, and pumpkin seeds. And that last little note there is do not eliminate all fats. So a lot of diets that you might go on often are quite a very low-fat diet, that's because even the right type of fats, they do contain quite a lot of energy for your body, so if you're eating them in really high portions, often that can contribute to maybe a little bit of extra kilos coming on that you didn't realise. So we don't want to eliminate all the fats, the good part about fats is the portion sizes that we should be eating them in are quite small, and it wouldn't negatively affect your weight, so eating the right portion of these healthy fats is super important. So nuts and seeds, we've got about palm-sized, so enough to cover the palm of your hand if you sprinkle them on, so it's about 20 almonds, eight macadamias, 20 pistachios, 18 cashews, four Brazil nuts, or six walnuts, or about a tablespoon of your chia seeds would be a serve of that. Avocado, that's another healthy fat, it's about a quarter of a whole avocado, so again, not much, we don't need much of these foods to hit the targets. Oil, so two teaspoons is a serve, but when you're sort of cooking for your family, or you're cooking for a few people, a good guide to go for for a main meal is about one teaspoon per person in family cooking, and olive oil would be that best oil to be using there, and then your serve of oily fish, so that might be a salmon fillet, or it might be a tin of tuna, or sardines, or mackerel, so those kind of oily fishes. So what does this look like in practice? How can we look after those brain cells so that when we're old, we've got sharp brains and we can do everything that we need to do, and we can remember all of the things we need to remember? So you might store a container of nuts if you're working at your desk at work, or you might sort of keep them, some people will keep them on their, if they're at home most of the time during the day, they might keep them on the little side table where they spend most of their time, or if they've got a little hobby, where they're doing their hobby so that you can snack on your little nuts. Use extra virgin olive oil, so swap to that oil if you're not using that oil, or if you're using a not-so-great of oil. Maybe having a night of the week where you would just typically go for your salmon Sunday nights, we pick Sunday in our house, so having a night where you might go for that salmon. Pick a day each week where you might go for a tinned fish-style lunch, so it might be Mondays, you're going to have your tinned salmon with a salad, or you might have a tuna sandwich or something like that. Sprinkle chia seeds or flaxseeds on your breakfast, that's a really easy one, or on your yogurt for your snack, or when you have your eggs on toast, maybe add some smashed avo to your toast, although, yeah, they blame young people for that, they're sending us broke, don't we? So as long as you can afford those avocados, pop them on your toast, that would be a good one to go for. The next one, so we've looked after our cognitive health now. Number four, really just a quick tip when it comes to your hydration. So we do know if we're dehydrated, we actually aren't concentrating as properly, we're not functioning as well as what we should, we might feel tired, we might feel lethargic, so our mind is not going to be cracking if we're dehydrated. So the averages that we need each day, men, 2.6 litres, women, a little bit less, about 2.1 litres per day. So lovely, nice chart for you to look at here. The best way to see if you're hydrated is to actually look at your urine colour. So one, two, and three, we're doing pretty good. So in the mornings, you might be a little bit more towards that four, or five, or six, that's normal to be a little bit more dehydrated when you first go to the bathroom in the morning, but really by morning tea, lunch, we want to have shifted up to that hydrated state for the rest of the day, so it's that one, two, or three, so only slightly yellow-coloured with your urine, and that's a good sign that you've got the right amount of fluids coming in. So some tips of what this might look like, some of these are work-specific, so if we're not working, then sort of we can add a few different suggestions, but it might be keeping a water bottle on your desk or where you spend most of your time, if you've got a water bottle, often you're going to drink it, you'll sip on it. You might have a sticky note on your computer if you're doing desk work or computer work, might pick a workmate or a housemate to keep you accountable. You can get a little hydration, we all have our phones nowadays, you can get little hydration apps, you can download them, and they prompt you every couple of hours to sort of sip on your water or keep up with your water. You can get very clever things, technology now, you can get little lights that go on your water bottle that flash at you if you haven't moved your water bottle in 30 minutes. You can get smart water bottles, you can get lots of things, phone reminder, some people that are working, every time they get a new email, that's their prompt to have a drink of water, so lots of things to keep you drinking water. And some people feel thirst really easily, other people don't feel that thirst as much, so some people do need a little bit more encouragement and prompting to keep up with their water drinking. Other people are like, oh, I don't know how you ever don't drink water, I'm thirsty all the time. So it does depend on the person. Another really good way is just to sort of time it with your meals, so if you're eating five breakfast snacks, lunch, dinner, and you've got five eating occasions per day, if you have a pretty good glass of water around all of those meals, you're probably going to be close to that two litres anyway if you're having quite a decent if you have a pretty good glass of water around all of those meals, you're probably gonna be close to that two litres anyway if you're having quite a decent-sized glass. So that's another way is just time it with your meals so that you're keeping yourself hydrated. The next one, so eat plenty of plants and check your vitamin status. So plants are super rich in the micronutrients. They're also really high in dietary fibre, which that's gonna loop into gut health, which we'll talk more about in one moment. But your micronutrients in particular. So if we look at those, you've got that first one there is iron. So if you're low in iron, it can cause for weakness, tiredness, constant lethargy. So again, we're not gonna be feeling like our mind's the sharpest if we're low in iron. B vitamins, so again, tiredness, feeling a sort of depression if we're low in B, some of our B vitamins, and irritability. Folate, again, low mood, selenium, low mood, if you're consistently low. And vitamin D can cause fatigue, impaired, impaired cognition if you're deficient. So if we're thinking about keeping your mood and your, your mind sharp, if we're low in some of these micronutrients, then that's gonna be really like, really detracting from your, your mind and eating for your mind. So if we have a look at where we get those from, we've got, um, the iron, so that's mainly in your red meats. But it's also in beans and pulses and fortified cereals. B vitamins, they're in some, so there is some fortified foods that have the B vitamins added. It's also in animal protein, lentils and legumes are a good source. Folate in particular, so green and orange veggies, beans, yeast extract, and fortified cereals. Selenium, Brazil nuts are really high in selenium, so about four Brazil nuts a day gives you your entire daily requirement of, selenium. So you don't even need many of those to sort of tick that box. Uh, it's also in meat, it's also in fish, seeds and wholemeal bread. Vitamin D, that's a big one we really do get from that safe exposure to the sun. Uh, but you do also get a little bit from the semens and the tunas, the fortified cereals and the sardines. You do also, you can also boost your vitamin D, as a fun fact, from the mushrooms. If you sun or you tan your mushrooms, not sure if you've ever heard of that, but if you put your mushrooms out in the sun for say, ten to twenty minutes before you eat them, they absorb the vitamin D and they, I guess, yeah, they activate the vitamin D. So when you eat them, they've got, I can't remember the exact amount, but I, quite a lot of vitamin D in them versus eating them without sunning them. So if you do have the chance before you eat the mushrooms, again, might not be practical to go and put your mushrooms out in the sun for twenty minutes before you eat them. But that's a really fun fact about the vitamin D in mushrooms. Um, raw, before you, before you cook them, yeah, yeah, so sun them. Fortified cereal, so if you look at your cereal boxes, um, on the back of the, in the label, if they're fortified in the label of the ingredients label, they'll often have the vitamins that they've added to the cereal. So they might get that naturally occurring cereal and they add in the mixture of the cereal that they might make, extra nutrients. Um, and there is, um, there has been some mandatory, um, I guess, fortification of things in Australia, so, um, like with things like bread, I think folate is mandatorily added to bread that's baked in Australia, and I think, they also have to use iodized salt in the production of bread. So that's, um, from a he, public health perspective, they've deliberately added some of those nutrients in, to stop deficiencies that were occurring that they were seeing more commonly, but that's been happening for years. So yeah, fortifications, just what they add, from a company perspective. So you can look at your labels to find what might be fortified there. Um, but yeah, so we can see from mood, mental health perspective, making sure we are having quite a well-varied diet. Um, and that we're ticking a lot of these food groups off is important to make sure we're keeping those nutrients up. We don't often suggest a blanket multivitamin that you take. Um, we typically say you wanna try and get it all from food if you can, and then if you're deficient, then supplement for the ones that you might be deficient in. The way you'd see if you're deficient is, um, I guess, through a blood test with your doctor, if your doctor's keeping an eye, on most of these. And typically iron and the B vitamins and the D, doctors are pretty good at doing in a regular health check for you. They're the more common ones. Dietary fibre on the flip side, so eating plenty of plants, um, when it comes to dietary fibre, so the plants, the dietary fibre that's in plants, helps to slow that digestion again. So when we're flipping back to those low GI carbohydrates, again, the fibre that you can add to your meal, gonna help to have that slower, more sustained release of energy. Dietary fibre is also a prebiotic, which we're about to get to now, but before we do, just some tips. If you are concerned that you might be low in something, you can check your bloods with your GP. Really though, if you're just eating a really wide range of plants, different plants, fruits, vegetables, grains, you're gonna be getting those nutrients in. Um, to complete that plate that we spoke about before, the last half of your meal ideally should be coming from those veggies and salads, to build up that last part of that meal. Um, so that we've completed that plate now, and then optimize your whole grains and your high-fibre foods where you can, so keeping those in your meals. Number six is garden fruits, that's not gonna make any sense until I explain it. When it comes to your mind in particular, we have a link between your gut and your brain, and your brain and your gut. They talk to each other pretty much all day long, essentially, and in your gut, you have something called a microbiome. Microbiome, again, is a big word, but it's basically just, all of the living sort of gut bacteria or microorganisms that live there. There's about seventy trillion, I think is the number. Lots, trillions and trillions and trillions of these little microorganisms that live in your gut, and that's normal, that's fine for them to be there. Um, but essentially we can have a sense of disbalance in your microbiome. So you can see on the left, I like to liken your microbiome to a bit like a veggie garden. When your microbiome is out of balance, essentially you've got more of the bad bacteria or, microorganisms that can live in your gut and less of the good. So that's like if your veggie garden was overtaken by weeds and all of the good, um, plants have sort of been overtaken and they're no longer producing fruit or vegetables like they should. On the flip side, if we have a microbiome that's in balance, we have the right amount of good. I'm not gonna say there's no weeds there in the good garden, there might be still a couple of weeds, but they haven't overtaken the garden, and the garden's still thriving, and it's producing fruit, it's producing vegetables. So your gut, if it's thriving and it's, and it's in that balance, it will be producing, um, I guess, good produce as well. So those good produce have then also been linked to improving your mood and your mental health. And they're doing a lot of research now in this area as to how some of this microbiome has been linked to some of those more, complex mental health conditions as well. So it's super, super important that we do look after our microbiome. One more note on the microbiome is that the serotonin, the feel-good hormone, about seventy percent of your body's feel-good hormone is produced in your gut. Which is quite a lot of that feel-good hormone is produced by the gut. So it's very, very important that we do look after this microbiome and that we do try and flip our, garden to look like that right side rather than that left side. Good news is it does, we, they have seen changes, if your microbiome might be a little bit more like the left, they have seen changes to like, to looking more like the right side in just two weeks of making good changes for your gut. So it is possible, if your microbiome's maybe a little bit out of balance, it is possible to get it back in balance. And there's lots of foods that we'll go through that can help you do that. Two buzzwords which I'm sure you've heard on Google or on Facebook or somewhere. You've got probiotics and you've got prebiotics. So they're big words when it comes to gut health. Probiotics is essentially like you're planting more good plants in your veggie garden. You're taking in that live, good bacteria, um, so that you can repopulate your microbiome with the good stuff, essentially. So that's things like yogurt, so that's made from the probiotics, kefir, aged cheese, kimchi, sauerkraut, sauerkraut, miso, tempeh and kombucha. Um, you can also take a prob, like you can also get probiotics in a supplement which you can see at the shops. So probiotics, essentially planting more plants in your garden. Prebiotics, that's essentially like, I guess, fertiliser for the good plants that's in your garden. So it's the food for the gut bacteria. So some fibre or some plant foods that we spoke about before, they are prebiotics, but you can see there's a few ones, so whole wheat products, pulses and legumes, oats, nuts and seeds, fruit and veg, veggies, oh, that's there twice, apologies, inulin and resistant starch. So all of those are food for that gut bacteria and help to shift that balance to be more like that right garden. Resistant starch, I often get questions about that one. Resistant starch is a funny one, it's found in things like, underripe bananas, so the slightly more green bananas have more resistant starch. Um, a fun fact about resistant starch, so when you cook pasta or rice and, you cool them in the fridge overnight and you eat leftovers, the amount of resistant starch in the leftovers that have been cooled is a lot higher. That's because when they, when the rice or the pasta cools, they go through a chemical process which makes the starch, resistant to digestin, uh, res, resistant to digestion. Tongue, tongue-twister that one. Um, so yeah, so if you've happened to have leftovers of your rice or your pasta, you've actually had more resistant starch without, without even knowing. So when it comes to meal prep, when it comes to meal prep, it's not so bad, you actually have a bit of a boost of resistant starch the second time you eat it. Um, keep in mind you wanna pop them in the fridge quickly after cooking so that you keep them food-safe. But yeah, fun fact about your resistant starch. What does this look like in practice? I have lots of tips on this one. So it might be if you're not eating yogurt and you do like yogurt, include it. I feel like that's one we all miss as a snack across the day. We don't really include it. It's a really good one for your probiotics. Um, when you're out and about, instead of a diet soft drink, you can actually often get kombuchas now at the, um, like at things like grilled or places like that. So you can do little kombucha drinks instead of the soft drink. Um, try some tempeh, if you've never had it, try it, see if you like it. It's like a, a good way to describe it is it's similar to tofu. Kinda like tofu, just a sort of different tofu, essentially. That's a really good way to explain it. Um, try overnight oats, so that can be a really good one. So soaking your oats overnight, you can add chia seeds, which are helpful with the, omega threes that we spoke about before. Um, turn leftover pasta in, pasta into a pasta salad for lunch for the next day. You might try hummus on your sandwiches, so sometimes if you make a, chicken and salad sandwich, you could add, spread a hummus to get some more of those lentils or legumes in. Or you might use it as a veggie stick dip instead of maybe cream cheese all the time, or whatever you might be using, or French onion dip. Go for some hummus. Um, this one I like, buy a novel vegetable each week at your grocery shop. So instead of just always going for your same old, same old veggies, go, okay, I'm gonna do one different veggie this week, what might that be? And as, when you look, you might not have to go, if you don't go to Woolies or Coles, like maybe if you go to some of those grocers, you always find new veggies that, might not be in the standard grocery store, that could mix up your variety. Cause that's important too for that microbiome that we spoke about before. Lots of variety is important to populate that properly. Add vegetables to your meals even if they don't normally belong. So often, so we might be having a spag bowl. Often it might not include veggies, so you might add some in. So you might add a tin of lentils to your mince mixture to make it go a little bit further. Or you might grate in some zucchini and carrot, just to up the nutrition quality of this bag bowl. Um, or anything, like any kind of meal that doesn't really, isn't meant to have veggies, you can add them. Just cause it's not meant to have it, doesn't mean it doesn't need to be there. From a health perspective, we want it there. Finely dice veggies and add them to omelets in the morning for breakfast, or you could add them to your rissoles if you're making rissoles. You can use pulse pasta sometimes instead of regular pasta. So pulse pasta's like, um, like they've got a chickpea pasta or a lentil pasta. So it's a pasta made from, I guess, yeah, those chickpeas or lentils. So you can get them from the shops in the pasta aisle, that can be something that might add a bit of variety. Um, this one here I like to ram on about, but include plants not only at dinner but also at lunch. I find Australians in particular, we mainly have veggies at dinner and we don't really have them anywhere else across the day. We sort of stack them all at dinner. To get the right amount that we need and a variety, if we're only having them at dinner, we're not gonna tick that box. So trying to think of ways that you can add them into lunch. So whether it be a salad, a wrap, um, might be a salad sandwich, adding your protein, remember we spoke about that before, don't skip the protein. Or you can think a little funner, like the rice paper rolls, these ones here, they're really fun, easy to make. You might make a burrito bowl, a homemade wrap on pizza, so you might use a wholemeal wrap and make a homemade pizza. Um, you could do a veggie-loaded fried rice, frittatas, lots of different things that you can do to make your lunch a little funner. And you can add veggies to all of those. Uh, snack it up, so you can, when your snacks, try and think of ways that you can add veggies to those. So might be roasted chickpeas, might be veggie sticks, might be mini frittatas again. Juice or smoothies, another good way, you can add lots of stuff into smoothies. You can add your chia seeds, you can add nuts, oats, lots of good stuff can go in there. Um, if you're running late, use a steam fresh bag, frozen, just as good as fresh. Frozen veggies are snap-frozen, which means they're sort of, all the nutrients are snap-frozen into that veggie at the time of freezing. Um, so often that nutritional quality is still there with your, your frozen veggies. So, you can get little steam fresh bags, so it might be, oh, I didn't have time to prep a veggie, veggie tonight, I've only got meat and some rice. I'll just pop a steam fresh bag to go with that tonight. Uh, swap to whole grain breads and cereals, we spoke about that. Sprinkle nuts and seeds over cereals or salads or yoghurts. Um, you might use kefir in your smoothies or in your oats. You might choose dark leafy greens instead of just going for your iceberg, or kind of cause lettuces all the time. Getting that nice dark leafy green in there is gonna have more nutrients for you. And what if you need to eat out or grab takeaway? Takeaway's part of life. Um, so you wanna make sure if you're getting takeaway, you wanna try and balance it where you can. Um, so try and get that source of protein, try to lose, choose the low GI carb. Like there is places you can choose the grain bread over the white bread. So there's some places that you can do that. Um, and try to squeeze some veggies or salads into it. So healthy takeaways. So you've got Subway, going for the nine-grain bread. You can, often now there's those, Viet rolled places or those Vietnamese places, you can get lots of those rice paper rolls or their salads, they're great. Um, like at the, at the servo, they've often got whole grain meat and salad sandwiches, that might be a better go-to instead of, maybe the sausage roll or whatever might have been the, the other option that was there. Um, steamed dumplings, you can get those and steamed veg at Chinese. Burrito bowls, they're quite good at Guzman. Uh, sushi rolls, so trying for the leaner meat options though where you can. So getting the tuna or the salmon on them, rather than like those crumbed, carajy chicken kind of looking ones. Um, and then Greek or Mediterranean, so you can go char-grilled veg, pita breads, we've got hummus or falafels which are made from chickpeas, um, from those kind of places. So you can, when you are eating out, there are some better options to choose. Remember, again, we want balance, so if you have to get something that's not on that list, it's fine. As long as it's sort of those infrequent times, um, and that most of the time we're getting our nutrition right, that's all that matters. So essentially, there's lots of different ways that we can eat from, um, mental health or our mind. So we've got eating for the day-to-day concentration, productivity, focus. So we've got that importance of eating regularly. Uh, making sure we've got that low GI carbohydrate, the protein. Um, we've got eating for our mood and mental health, so that's where it comes to that, particularly that gut health and the importance of the gut health. Making sure we've got all of the micronutrients there, and we've got that long-term health. So that's particularly making sure, we've got that healthy nutrition underpinning and then we've added those omega threes in so that you're looking after that, um, cognitive, cognitive decline. We're trying to stop as much of that cognitive decline as we can. And questions? We did have a few questions throughout, I'm not sure if there was any questions left over, yeah. Fasting, yes. Yes, that is such a tricky one. Often, I guess a lot of the times fasting is coming from more of a weight loss perspective, I think is where a lot of people get sort of started on that fasting, um, trend. Some people do have success with intermittent fasting for weight loss. It is something though that when it stops, whether food just goes back to normal and whether, those changes are sort of maintained long-term. Some people also find the fasting is okay for maybe the first week or so and then that overeating then starts to kick in. That cycle does start kicking in, so that can happen. But there is, and it's actually quite a new, like, they're doing quite a lot of research in fasting at the moment, because there is some known benefits of fasting, so, um, they're, I guess, trying to nut out exactly what they are. Um, and it's really hard to do nutrition research on people, cause like, it's hard to sort of say, well, you have to fast, cause you're controlling people. So it's tricky to get the research that they're, uh, that they're wanting there, but there are some benefits. Um, but again, on the flip side, if it's maintainable for you is the other side of the coin, I guess, when it comes to that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, that's. Yeah, yeah. And like I said, not a one-size approach fits all. So if you're finding like you're managing that, and it's not sort of causing you to overeat later in the day, or you're not feeling that sense of deprivation, if that's working for you, that's fine. The only thing is just making sure in that eating window, you've had the chance to get the nutrients in. So that would be my only, I guess, caveat, is just making sure you're getting the quality in the two times that you do eat, that you're able to get, I guess, the fruit, the veg, your adequate dairy, um, protein, and then all of that good stuff that we spoke about. But if you can manage that, then if it's working, I don't like to change things that are working for you in particular, yeah. But if you can manage that, then if it's working, I don't like to change things that are working for you in particular, yeah. Yeah, 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 and if there's no sense of like, with that cycle, if there's no deprivation, if he's not feeling that, then it's working for him. Um, but yeah, often, flip side, yeah, often, I, I think often women find that deprivation cycle a little bit more, um, I guess tricky to manage, they often feel that dieting cycle a little bit more. I don't know, it seems more common in women to go around that dieting cycle. Um, that's very generalised and broad of course, but yeah, yes. How much might be way too much? You'd be fine at four litres, you'd be fine at four litres, so two point one is I guess the requirement. Like I said, some people feel thirst a little bit more, so you might drink more across the day. The only time too much water becomes a problem is if it's sort of, like, I guess, causing issues, like the blood, like your doctor might pick that up at a blood test if you're low in things like, often when they check your blood, you might be low in sodium or electrolytes because all of that water's coming in and it's diluting your, um, electrolytes out. But at four litres, it shouldn't be happening at four litres for you. Yeah. Fluids, yeah. And of course, with that two point one litres, that's sort of like the, the baseline. So of course, if you were to exercise or you're to have a really hot sweaty day, you're gonna need more. So listening to your thirst, if you've got thirst for it, like I said, some people don't feel as thirsty, so we like, give them a minimum, so. Yeah, yeah, so dairy, typically, so in terms of dairy, the main reason we suggest dairy or that we ask you to keep dairy in your diet is more for the calcium perspective. So when we're looking after your bone health, so today wasn't really about bone health, but it's part, it's about for your mind, but when it comes to just general health, it's important to keep, if you can, like, if you're not allergic to dairy, often dairy is the one we suggest because it's the highest in calcium of the foods, naturally occurring foods. Um, so typically it does depend on age, but it's around two to three serves of dairy a day. Um, the one that goes a little bit higher than two to three is, um, women over fifty. They actually need to have about four serves of dairy per day to look after their bones. Yep, you can have the alternate milks, yep, almond, oats, um, those kind of milks, they're okay to have as well. They are gonna be lower in protein and you do wanna flip them over and make sure they have fortified them with calcium. So cow's milk, um, naturally has calcium in it, they don't have to fortify it, but all of those oats and almonds and macadamia milks, they've got lots of milks now. Typically, they do add calcium, but some of them, they don't add calcium to them. So if you are using some of those milks, making sure that there's, we say, a hundred and twenty milligrams per one hundred mil is the amount of calcium. I can write that down for you if, if you want, but yeah, checking to make sure they've got the calcium added so that they're a like substitute. Some of them do add su- sugar, some of them you can get without sugar, so again, bit of label reading when it comes to that, looking to see what they're actually adding into your ingredients on those products. Of course, a label reading. Yeah. 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 We can, we can add that to the list, maybe a label reading workshop, could be something. Yeah. 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 A label reading workshop would be good, cause that's how we know what's in our food, right? Cause a lot of the products, they say on the front, all natural, like, like all of these claims, but when you flip them over. Yeah. Yeah, Greek yogurt's good, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so our, our Australian guide to healthy eating does suggest all low-fat dairy. Um, low fat's gonna have lower saturated fat, so that not-so-great fat, um, they've often sort of taken out a lot of that bad, bad fats. In terms of taste, it does taste a little bit less creamy, but what happens is, a lot of people say that the low-fat products, they've got added sugar. Like when they look at the label, the low-fat might have a little bit more sugar. The way to explain that is, if you, so like for the full fat, essentially what they do to make that low-fat is they take the fat out of it, which means there's more of everything else that naturally occurs in the milk. So to make the same volume, there's gonna be more protein, there's actually a little bit more calcium, there's a little bit of naturally, more naturally occurring sugar. Um, so they're not adding extra stuff into them per se, it's just that there's more of everything. It would, a cholesterol check would, yes. But that's a really tricky part of nutrition, is it's, there's so much grey, it's not, if they're adding extra sugar, I think they're trying to pass laws that make them have to list if they're adding extra sugar, um, soon. But typically in your nutrition label, you can see if they've added extra sugar. Um, so in the ingredients list, it'll sort of list out milk, et cetera, sugar, if they've added in sugar. Ideally, we do wanna avoid too many added sugars if we can. Again, it's a really tricky one, cause it is in the context of your diet. If you're not having too many added sugars elsewhere in your day, then a small amount of sugar in your yoghurts probably okay, particularly if it helps you, if it's the only way you're gonna get probiotics or if it's a source of your protein or if you need to calcium. So sometimes it's about sort of looking at the, the context of the whole diet to see if that's something you should have in your, in your diet or whether you should go for the lower sugar options. Ideally, lower sugar is always best, but if you need that little bit to make it taste good and to eat it, that could be worth it if you need it for your bone health or those other, those other health aspects. I know that's a wishy-washy answer, but unfortunately it is quite wishy-washy in a public context. But if, like, in terms of like, sort of one-on-one sessions, all of that stuff, we can sort of see what you eat day-to-day and I'd be able to go, yeah, perfect, keep having that yoghurt, cause your added sugars are low the rest of the day. Um, so that can be the benefit of sort of more one-on-one, you can sort of, we can sort of get into that nitty-gritty. Yeah. Yeah, there's lots of the ideas. Yeah, cool, wonderful, any more questions or do we wanna end the, end the livestream? Wonderful, thank you so much.